All right, here we go. We should be good to go. Let me wait for it to admit everyone, then we'll start. Everyone waiting, I apologize for the delay. Zoom changed its format since we last used it. We had some issues with audio. We need to get all the officials in before we admitted the public. I believe everyone is in. Anyone that would like to speak for the public discussions is going to have to manually raise their hands so I can unmute you. Good evening, everyone. The January 2025 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting will now be called to order. Kindly join us in rising for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I appreciate that. If everyone would remain standing. Madam Mayor, will you kindly deliver the memorials?
At this time, I cannot deliver the memorials. They were never given to me, so I don't have December's memorials.
What we'll do is we'll get them on the website and on the Facebook. Mr. Will, would you kindly deliver the roll call, please?
Mr. Heller.
Present.
Ms. Volio. Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mr. Duplikic. Here. Ms. Suiki. Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mayor Leslie.
Here.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Wilbert. Mrs. Boyle.
Mrs. Boyle may be muted, just to let you folks know.
Okay, I'll just check her off. Chief Montella.
Here.
Acting Chief Tim Havick.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you, sir. Is Ms. Small present?
She's muted. She's muted. She's on my screen. She's muted.
Ms. Small, you should have the option to unmute yourself now. I apologize.
It works. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Small. Good evening. I just have some highlights of what's been going on at Coburn Elementary. In December, we had hosted a successful toy drive where our student council collected hundreds of toys that were donated to Nemours Dupont Hospital for Children. The Coburn Elementary Chorus and Band students gave an amazing performance at the Coburn Elementary Winter Concert. The Coburn Chorus also participated in the annual Brookhaven Tree Lighting Ceremony this holiday season. Additionally, Coburn 4th and 5th Grade Students were treated to the annual Sun Valley High School Chorus and Band Concert. They were transported to Sun Valley a few days before holiday break and enjoyed this outstanding performance. Pico Energy and National Children's Theater provided a live in-school theatrical program for our students on a wide variety of topics. Kilowatt Kitchen teaches students how we measure energy, how we waste energy, how we conserve energy, and what renewable resources are. Our Coburn students enjoyed this performance and had plenty of laughs. In January, when we returned last week from winter break, our students started the year with a review of our core values: respectful, responsible, and ready. We dove in with fun games to review Coburn's school-wide expectations. Today, our students enjoyed a traditional snow day. And I am excited to announce that 10 years ago today, the new Coburn Elementary opened for our students. So we have been in the new building for 10 years. As someone who has been there for 10 years, it doesn't feel that long ago that we packed up and moved to Our Lady of Charity and moved back. So we hit our 10-year anniversary today. We are available on Instagram at Coburn Elementary. Anyone would like to catch up with us, and I hope everyone has a wonderful and safe January.
Thank you, Ms. Small. Let's open the first public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, raise your hand and I'll admit you.
Terry, I just I saw that there are only 71 participants in the meeting, but I think you mentioned that there were more. Is something going wrong with letting people into the meeting?
I clicked Admit All. Let me scroll through the participant list. See if there's any waiting. We had a bunch of Zoom users listed that disappeared. It was just listed under Zoom users, no names. There's no one. Hold on a minute. There is no one waiting to be admitted right now. Let's open the first public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for their first public discussion session, raise your hand. Actually, hit the Raise Your Hand icon. All right, Chris, we can call on you. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Ms. Koya.
Okay, I'm here. I was informed after the meeting that you, in January or December, excuse me, allowed Franklin to receive approximately $54,000 of their bond back. Well, we are without a management company now. We supposedly there were lots of no contact with the board, okay? Apparently Franklin is holding things up. Apparently Franklin has got two accounts that are the associations. And Franklin is not turning paperwork over. We still don't have a budget here. They are not cooperating with the transition. They have billed for parking, paving. They have not fixed the curbs. Mr. Kishanza said that he was unaware of the fact that a railing was supposed to be put up in the dog park. Well, there is. Terry, you were here, as well as Dave Duplikic, as well as your wife, as well as one of Catania's people, said absolutely there should be a railing of some sort. He is unaware of that fact. He told your wife and Dave Duplikic that I was satisfied with whatever was going on. I am not. I am not by any means. I mean, we have taken, we have lost another member of the board. So they were running on four people at this point, okay? Now, as far as I know, it's supposed to be a board of five. We're supposed to have had a audit a budget as of December 1st. It is now January 6th. We don't have one. We don't have coupons to this new management company, which is named Reese Management out of King of Prussia. We have heard nothing from them. I received my information from associate calling them about a situation that was gone in this development. And I thought I was being returned a phone call about that, but instead I got land blasted with everything that was going on with the board. And much to my, you know, and then Dave called me, when I called him, said to me, they got additional funds from the board, from the borough. And I'm sitting here going, excuse me? And then I watched the borough meeting and found out that Dave and
The escrow was released.
Right. Some of the escrow was released. Well, guess what? They're not cooperating. They're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. They're holding everything up. Why, why in God's name was it released to them? And any more money should not be released until there is an inspection of this place. Their transition has not even taken place.
It's been ugly. It's been ugly since the beginning. Charles NJ, I'm going to defer to for the time being before I get back to it. Charles, how much do we have remaining in escrow?
I'm going to say there's like $20,000 remaining.
Well, that's not going to fix the thing.
It doesn't sound right. You know, I'm not an engineer, but that doesn't sound like that's going to be enough sufficient to cover it. So Charles and/or Jay, what can we do to fix this situation? I think these folks have been dealing with this for far too long.
Again, the escrow money that the borough is holding is for the express purpose of ensuring the completion of the site improvements. Now, there may be other issues there that need to be addressed, but again, that is not the purpose. That is not the contractual purpose of the public improvement escrow monies. Again, they are for release of certain site improvements. Those site improvements have been completed per the specs, per the inspection reports prepared by Catania Engineering. So we are contractually required to release, again, those site improvements if, in fact, the site improvements have been completed per the specs and per the land development agreement.
So the dog park does not get its railings or anything like that?
That's what that $16,000, $20,000 is set aside for.
What about the where the dumpsters are that are broken? The actual gates and stuff like that? We're supposed to pay for that now because they didn't put the correct gates on, the dumpsters?
That was a part of the original walk. Terry and Dave and Charles.
And yeah, with Alex Rodriguez.
Correct. And it was the railings for the dog park. This is what I mentioned in the December meeting, was the dog park was supposed to have a railing. I did forget about the trash containers, but they were supposed to have new gates, and it was the curbs. They were the three major things that I recall from the walk, but the dog park was an absolute safety issue because of the fact of the matter is that there was a railing that was required.
Land does not require railing, by the way.
Your person said it did.
Yes. When we did the walk, he did state that there was a railing that was necessary because it was a safety issue.
And again, they got their money back, so they're pretty much out of here. But we're still holding the bag.
We have to have a more forceful viable resolution to this. Mr. Catania and Wills, I think it's gone on long enough. Obviously, we all agree here. The entire council agrees here. I'm sure Mayor Leslie agrees here. The inspectors agree. So what can we do to light a fire under their butts?
Again, I believe in communication and I suggest we speak directly with the developer himself.
But they're not communicating back. That therein lies the problem. Chris, is that accurate?
Mr. Wills, I've tried to call them and they're pretty uncooperative.
Jay, a legal letter, would that help?
The agreement has to have some type of language in it. The rest, the public improvement agreement has to have some language. You're going to put them on notice that the work is that railing install, whatever that item is, give them so many days to fix it in accordance with the agreement. Fails fixing that amount of time, then you can take action to have the borough do the work and deduct it from those calls.
What about the gates to the dumpsters?
It would be included in that directive.
So is it Franklin or is it this new management company that?
Who knows? Because we have yet to hear from anybody from the new management company at all.
To do with the new management, we have nothing to do with.
Franklin, correct?
It's Franklin is still the one who
Company.
Um, at this point, they, from what I understand, they have signed with Reese. But Reese is supposed to have sent us a coupon book as of for 2025. We have not heard anything from Reese. And again, we still don't have a budget approved for 2025. So we have no idea what whatever is going on here.
I spoke to Chris a few weeks ago, and I have a bunch of notes of the concern the residents over there are having at this point in time. So I'll have to sit down with either Mr. Wills or Mr. Catania and Mr. Heller and, you know, we got to
Chris, Chris, here's what we're going to do. Reach out to them. You tell them next Wednesday, next Wednesday at 10:00 AM in the council room.
Me? Tell them?
Yeah, if you have, do you have communication with them?
No, I have no communication with them. I have no communication. I was dumped this information. This was verbally vomited on me after reporting of something that was going on in the community that should not be, okay? And I received a phone call back and I verbally got vomited on all this information.
Vomited is fitting in this matter. Jay, what do you suggest then? I mean, it's endured long enough, I believe.
The borough's contractual relationship is with the developer, not with the management company. And it is the developer that has certain obligations to the borough, not the management company. So Mr. Catania and I will be in communication with the developer.
Can we expedite this and get this by next week at the latest?
Well, I'll certainly have the communication between now and next week, whether we'll have a sufficient reply. That is yet to be determined, but I will try to expedite things.
I mean, it's a joke at this point what these folks are dealing with over there. You paid $300,000 for a unit. I mean, it should have been completed at this point.
It should have been.
Chris, we apologize. We we obviously have a lot of duties, but this is something that we should be near the top of the list at this point, not as if it wasn't before. Sometimes, most often, we're bound to relying on developers and management companies and such with HOAs that just simply do not communicate.
That's true. That is very true.
It's up to us. It's up to our team to light a fire. And you've heard this before, but we'll get it done. Jay and Charles, I needed taking care of this week. This week or next, at least the meeting. If you
And would somebody let me know when this meeting would be?
I will. I will.
Okay.
Mr. Duplikic does have your cell phone number, correct, Dave?
Absolutely.
Information, Franklin's information, I have associate's information, the contact of the
And now the new management information.
All right, what I'm saying is we have to be far more forceful than we've been, as if we, you know, I mean, we were pretty firm before, but sometimes you have to just get a little more forceful to light a fire. And I do, I apologize that it's endured so long, Chris.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, as always. Is there anyone else for public discussion? If so, kindly raise your hand. Let me scroll. We have a lot of screens. I see no hands up, so that is closing the first public discussion session. Let me pull up my agenda. Chief Montella, sir.
Thank you, Ter. Good evening, council and residents. Our Brookhaven Fire Company fire report for December 2024 is the following. We had four fire incidents, 16 non-fire, 27 calls for mutual aid, one drill, total of 48 calls for the month. Our yearly totals will be added in with this as well. For the year, we had 30 fire incidents in the borough, 213 non-fire, 339 calls for mutual aid, 51 training sessions, total of 633 fire rescue calls for the year. We had $85,000 in property loss in the borough for the year. We had $2,650,000 of property endangered. We had no firefighter injuries or civilian injuries. Our manpower for the month of December was 48 calls, averaged 12 firefighters per call. We were in service for 265 hours. For the year, the fire company was in service for 3,496 hours. We had one training session for the month, 27 average firefighters, 27 hours of training allowed for the month, 1,786 for the year. We had the following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had two building fires, one at 109 East Maple Avenue was an oven fire and 280 Bridgewood Road. K8 Trimble Run Apartments. We had a boiler issue that caused electrical issue as well in the apartment. We had two accidents, one at 33 Trimble Boulevard, one at 352 on Cambridge Road. Assistant Garden City Fire Company on a working building fire at 17 Ribby Drive. Assistant Rocky Run Fire Company on a building fire on Williamson Avenue. Assistant Chester Fire Department on a second alarm working building fire at 1402 West 3rd Street. Assistant Chester Township Fire Company on two building fires, one at 1225 Elson Road and one at 1242 Greener Road. Assistant Lower Chi Chester Fire Department on two building fires, one at 1363 Green Street and one at 1402 Tally Lynn Avenue. And we assisted Swatmore Fire Company on a building fire at 604 Yellow Avenue. Our training involved first arriving engine company and truck company assignments. We did a PowerPoint presentation on that. Brookhaven Fire Company had three new members earn their senior firefighter status, completing their rookie books and the training program, earning their new Black 52 Shield by going to a working fire as well as their interior structural firefighter. They earned that. Our fire company attended the borough tree lighting. We brought Santa Claus around the borough with candy canes. Our ambulance 52, our new ambulance, was just licensed by the state of Pennsylvania and the Delco EHS. We just placed that ambulance in service, the 1125. That's our fire report, our ambulance report for the year. The month of December, we had 250 calls, 160 transports, 108 of them were local alarms, 142 mutual aid. Total alarm for 2024 was 3,041 ambulance calls. And that's it. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Acting Chief Havick.
Good evening, everybody. For December report, the officers were assigned a total of 750 calls for service for the month. There were four criminal cases and two non-traffic summary cases filed with the district court during the month. We took reports for 19 thefts, one simple assault, public drunkenness, one disorderly conduct, 26 suspicious conditions. We handled 11 civil matters, 12 domestic disputes, 30 alarms, 34 vehicle crashes, and we conducted 230 business or security checks for the month. There were 11 adult arrests, three juvenile arrests, 52 traffic citations were issued, 13 parking citations were issued, and 10 warnings were given, and 46 traffic warnings were given for the month. I just want to say Happy New Year to everybody. After today, it appears winter is in full swing finally. I hope everyone is safe. I also want to wish recently retired borough treasurer Dylan McDade a happy and relaxing retirement. It was a pleasure working with her for the last 18 years. There are no active solicitation permits in the borough currently right now. The last one expired right at Christmas time. During the month, just something for the community here, during the month, I met with a representative from the National Alliance on Mental Illness, the Main Line Chapter, also known as NAMI Main Line. The representative and I spoke at length about programs offered by NAMI, which are no cost to the public. Programs are designed to support not only those with mental illness, but also their friends and family. Some of the programs they offer are family-to-family education, family member support groups, workshops and forums, and they also do outreach and advocacy to schools, churches, other community organizations as well. We do have brochures about the organization here in the lobby at police station at the police department. So if anybody wants more information, you can feel free to come by and pick up a brochure. They also have a website that really has a lot of information about their programs there. The website is namimainline.org. It's N-A-M-I mainline PA.org, namimainline PA.org. And on that note, I also wanted to remind everyone that the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline is also available 24/7/365 by calling 988 from any phone. You know, sometimes it's a tough time of year, so I think it's just important to remind everyone of that. Us in the community in December, we finished our donation drive for Domestic Abuse Project. Previously, I reported the school that assisted us, the Coburn assisted us doing it during the month of November. We continued through the middle of December. It was an amazing major success for us. We filled several vehicles with supplies that will directly benefit the programs offered by DAP, especially their safe houses and victims that go to those safe houses, victims of domestic violence. So I really look forward to hopefully teaming up with the AP again in the future to do something for the organization. So during the month, also on December 11th, we did a police escort for a second grader at Coburn, a young man named Hunter who lives back here in the neighborhood behind the police station. He won a raffle at school to get a police escort to school. So he rode with Officer Connor to school and was using the lights and siren, and he was a big VIP for the day. He really, really enjoyed that. It was a pleasure for us to do that, and we love teaming up with Coburn and the PTL and doing things like this. These events are really fun for everybody involved. And during the month of December, I just want to point out that we were absolutely showered with gratitude and love from our community. We received so many donations of cookies, cakes, all kinds of sweets, you name it. It was in our police department here. The table was full all month, sodas, drinks, Gatorade, all kinds of stuff. Not only that, we also received meals from residents, businesses in town as well. I just think that it really means a lot to us, and I want to thank every person, every business and organization that thought of us during December and the holiday period. And even throughout the year, it's all year, nonstop. We constantly feel the love from our community, and we can't thank you more for that. The small gestures of kindness, they really remind us how much the department means to the community, and we really appreciate that. So from the bottom of our heart, thank you. And finally, for training for the month, we did the following training in December. Detective Wetton attended his monthly SWAT trainings. Officer Martin and Officer Kelso completed range qualification under the supervision of Detective Wetton. All officers completed refresher training in the use of handcuffs and the expandable baton, as well as OC spray, commonly known as pepper spray. And officers also completed refresher training in use of force, defensive tactics, and de-escalation techniques. And finally, Officers Martin, Zebly, Kelso, Roller, and Duff completed their biannual recertification in CPR AED or SAE. And my report was submitted by email for everyone's review as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a great holiday season. Welcome back to our meetings. And I just have one congratulations to Officer Pazley. Him and his wife had a new baby in mid-December, I believe it was. I don't remember the exact date, so congratulations to them and end of my report.
Mr. Will, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening and best wishes to everyone. We're a happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. The solicitor's report is on file with the borough secretary's office in the event any members of the public would care to review it. I do have two action items for borough council's consideration this evening, and they concern two outstanding tax assessment appeals for properties located at 300 Harbin Way, units 314 and 334 respectively. Earlier this year, both of these units had filed tax assessment appeals with the Delaware County Court, challenging their tax assessment to these particular residential properties. The Pendelco School District, the County of Delaware, and the property owners have now reached a tentative agreement fixing the tax assessment for years 2024 and 2025. The parties have agreed to a very modest decrease in the respective tax assessments and are now requesting that the borough stipulate to the tax assessment new figures and the new settlement. And therefore, I have prepared two distinct resolutions for council's consideration, basically stipulating to the Basically stipulating to the proposed settlement for both of these properties. They are, again, resolutions that basically authorize myself as solicitor. To execute the stipulation on behalf of the Borough, settling both of these tax assessment appeals. And so if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to adopt the resolution. Settling the tax assessment appeal at three hundred Harbin Way Unit Three Fourteen.
Who would like to motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any questions?
Very well, in the test.
Motion carries.
Appeal concerns the unit again at three thirty-four, three hundred Harbin Way. The resolution that I have prepared is almost identical to the other resolution. Settling the tax assessment appeal at three fourteen Harbin Way. Again, this resolution would authorize myself as solicitor. To execute the stipulation that will then be filed with the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. Settling this tax assessment appeal. Again, so if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, again, a motion would be in order to adopt this resolution.
What say your counsel?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or questions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wills.
Some of the other salient items on the solicitor's report are as follows. Number two, the Our Lady of Charity School Property. Back in November, my office had filed two applications with the zoning hearing board. On behalf of both OLC, seeking an all-street parking variance. And on behalf of the Borough, seeking a minimum side yard setback variance. On December seventeenth, I appeared before the zoning hearing board to present both of these applications. I am pleased to advise the council and the public. That the board voted unanimously to grant OLC. An all-street parking variance to permit eighty-eight parking spots. Instead of the required one hundred and eighty-four parking spots. The zoning hearing board also voted unanimously. To grant the Borough a minimum side yard setback of nine feet for the Convent Building. Rather than the required twenty feet. Now, a subdivision application has been filed with the Borough and with the county. The Borough Planning Commission is scheduled to review this subdivision application on January the twenty-first. I will be appearing at that planning commission meeting to present the subdivision application. Basically dividing a twelve-acre parcel into two lots. Seven point five acre parcel would then be conveyed to the Borough. And approximately a four and a half acre parcel would remain, again, with the Our Lady of Charity Parish. Third item on my agenda concerns the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority. As the Borough is aware and council is aware, we have been approved for a loan up to a million dollars. For the financing of the OLC acquisition project. An ordinance authorizing. This loan is scheduled for adoption by Borough Council later this evening. Councilman Burke will be presenting that particular ordinance. At his particular. Committee report. Again, this is a very attractive financing at approximately three and three point five percent. So again, very attractive interest rate. Next item on my agenda concerns amendments to the Borough's current recycling ordinance. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection has advised the Borough that in order to be eligible. For a recycling performance grant, the Borough's nineteen ninety-one recycling ordinance. Needs to be updated to meet Act one oh one compliance issues. I have drafted a new ordinance supplementing and amending the Borough's nineteen ninety-one recycling ordinance. To meet grant eligibility and Act one oh one compliance. Again, this ordinance is scheduled for a motion to advertise, which will be presented. Again, during Councilman Burke's report. Next item on my agenda concerns the Borough's twenty twenty-five emergency operations plan. Again, that has been drafted with the work of Steve Schultz, our Borough's Emergency Management Coordinator. I have drafted a resolution for Council's consideration this evening. Approving, adopting and placing into immediate effect. The Borough's updated twenty twenty-five emergency operations plan. And again, this is pursuant to section seventy-five oh three of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Services Code. In essence, we are required to have municipal emergency operations plan. And again, this plan will be presented during Councilwoman Heller's emergency operations report. Also on my agenda is the mutual aid agreement. This is an agreement that, again, Mr. Schultz has presented to council several months ago. I have been in contact with Mr. Schultz. We've made minor revisions and changes there too. But again, that will be subject to a motion for adoption by Borough Council. This is basically a mutual aid agreement among and between the Borough and seven other surrounding municipalities. And then finally, on my report is Popeyes Restaurant. I have been participating in multiple communications with the development team for Popeyes. Concerning the replacement of dead trees and shrubs adjacent to Eden Park. I'm pleased to advise that this work is scheduled to be completed on or before May the first. Of twenty twenty-five. And with that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. Mr. Catania, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report's on file as well. Couple of things I do want to mention is community development block grant applications for improvements to Somerville Park. And for the Betty Kelly Memorial Walking Trail have been submitted to the county. We expect to hear whether they were successful in the April-May timeframe. Memorial Park, the retaining wall on Field Three has been substantially completed by JMC Contractors. And then I see on the agenda, there is consideration for approval of change order number one. For the Sampson Park project, and I'm not sure if. Councilwoman Heller wants me to handle that or she will handle it under her report.
What do you say, Mrs. Heller?
It's fine. It doesn't matter either way.
Okay. So when we, when the project was bid, it included four alternates. Borough Council approved the base bid. Plus consideration, it didn't really specify which alternates were going to be accepted or not. In order to close out, or I'm sorry, not to close out the right, not term, in order to. Make, get the contract in order, we would need a change order approving those alternates and. That would be to. For the batting cage would be to relocate the batting cage, which is actually a net deduct of six thousand nine hundred. Seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-five cents for a storage garage for fifty-six thousand dollars, two hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Power to a, one of the storage sheds for nine, five thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars. And to relocate a second storage shed for three thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars. For a total change order in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-five cents. Council would need to approve that change order.
You want to run that motion now, folks? Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any questions? Any opposed or any questions?
No.
Motion carries.
And that is all I have. Thank you.
I have one update. We are waiting on the closing date with the Archdiocese to purchase the. Our Lady of Charity property. Mr. Wills, I understand that should take place in early February. Is that correct if all goes well?
Probably late February.
Late February.
Is what we're looking at right now. Yes. We would have to approve the.
Delaware Valley Regional Finance.
Yeah, but also we have to approve the subdivision application, which I'm hoping we're going to be able to do at the February monthly meeting. And then after that, we're hoping to go to settlement by the end of February, which would be within the timeframe. As initially contemplated with the agreement of sale between the Borough and Our Lady of Charity Church and the Archdiocese of Philadelphia.
All right. I want to thank the full council, the previous council, everyone involved. After that is settled and. The ink is dry, we will schedule a meeting with the OLC committee. And as we guarantee the public, the public will have. The committee will come up with ideas and shall present them to the public for the use of the land, although it will be largely green space. Of course, the only open question is the building. Which may. Sit for ten years. We don't believe that we can afford to. Renovate it, so it looks like demolition or we could even mothball it. The good news is the rest of the property is usable. And we can turn it into a nice park at very limited cost. No matter how long it takes, but I thank you for that. My first action item is a motion to approve the November twenty-five council workshop minutes.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries. Second motion is to approve the December second council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed questions? Motion to approve the December sixteen special council meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed questions? Motion carries. The last motion is a motion to provide a six-month medical insurance severance package to. Retired, recently retired Treasurer Delilah McDay, which would end on June thirty, twenty twenty-five. For agreeing to stay and work the last six months of twenty twenty-four, as she did have the option. To retire, but we would have been in dire straits without a treasurer in order to train the newly hired treasurer, Stephen McCourt. In turn. She has agreed to hold, she had agreed to hold off her retirement till December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. In order to provide that training, so it would work sort of as a severance package.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You second it?
I believe that was Ms. Fulvia. Oh, wait, not even close, sorry. There's any opposed or questions? And I want to close by thanking Ms. McDay for her great service. We are certainly going to miss her, that's for sure. We're in good hands with Stephen McCourt, but Delilah will be missed. Ms. Awicky?
Yes, we do have a motion to approve the January bill list. The general fund was twenty-five thousand eight hundred and six dollars ninety-two cents. Road fund was four hundred eighty-six dollars. Sure fund was one million, one hundred forty-seven dollars and four hundred and fifty-two dollars. So the total was one million, one hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. Now, so the sure fund didn't, did include the Delcora payment for this year, one million, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Which will be paid in the next month to Delcora. So I'm making a motion to approve the bill.
Who shall take the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions on the bill list? Motion carries.
Yeah, we do. Okay, we do have. The motion to adopt the resolution designated delegates for the Borough Tax Collection Committee. For Delaware County, and I'm going to make that motion that we do pass that resolution.
Who wants to second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed or questions? Motion carries.
Now, the last one I have is the motion to adjust the hourly rate for the rental coordinator to twenty-five dollars and eighty-one cents an hour. So I'm making that motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed or any questions? Motion carries.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Fulvio?
Just two quick updates. The next business. Revitalization committee meeting will be held next Monday, January thirteenth at seven PM. And the next sustainability committee meeting will be held next Tuesday, January fourteenth at seven PM. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Fulvio. Appreciate you. Mrs. Heller?
I am going to do my motions first. My first motion is to adopt the resolution approving, adopting and placing into immediate effect. The Borough twenty twenty-five emergency operations plan that Jay spoke about. That Steve Schultz, our emergency coordinator, has worked on with those improvements. So I'm making a motion.
Who's taking that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Thank you, Mrs. Heller.
So the next motion I have is to approve the Emergency Management Coordinator Mutual Aid Agreement. By and among Brookhaven Borough, Bethel Township, Chad's Ford Township, Chester Heights Borough, Conker Township, Edgemont Township, Thornborough Township. And Middletown Township. And again, this is something that Steve Schultz has worked with those different departments. To provide us with that mutual aid as well as Jay, so I'm making that motion.
Who wants to second?
Just so aware, again, this is an agreement is only for a period of one year. Like I said, if we find that it is not working properly. After one year, we are free to exit the agreement, so. It's on a temporary basis, but we're hoping this is going to be a long-term endeavor.
So should the, so should the motion then just state for the twenty twenty-five year?
No, because the, 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 the agreement itself is only for a period of one year, so we are approving the agreement. And again, it's, it's durational period is only for a period of one year.
Got it. I'm making that motion.
I believe Ms. Fulvio took the second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
So as for my other notes and my other meetings, I, along with Public Works and the Residential Inspector, met on the twenty-third of December with. A Boy Scout named Brandon to discuss another upcoming Eagle Scout project. He will be at the February meeting to present it to council, his project. And it has to do with the Butterfly Center. So Brandon will be there at our February meeting to present that to council. We will also in February will be recognizing. Boy Scout Zach Justin for achieving his Eagle Scout. For his project that was at the Arlington Park, the Little Pocket Park with his two benches and his two trees. So he'll be at the February meeting. The Rec Board and the Parade Committee sponsored a snowball dance this past Friday, the third. For fifth and sixth graders, students from the Pendelco School District, Holy Family and the Christian Academy. We had over a hundred and thirty-nine students that attended and hopefully they all had a great time. Our next dance is scheduled for their spring break. Gives them something to do right after the holiday break. There will be no parade committee this month, so the one that's notated on the calendar for January eighth will not be occurring this month. Technology and Communications will meet on Thursday, the ninth and Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. Please note that we've changed the times from previous meetings. It used to be seven o'clock and now they're being held at six thirty. And we're still always looking for additional volunteers and help. I will be scheduling an executive session with the Technology Committee members as well as council to review. Some websites, communications and our committees, so we will be looking to do that in the next few weeks. Our full aging is this Sunday, the twelfth, from one PM to three PM, and the craft is going to be a potted succulent. We're going to be painting the pots as well as planting the succulents. Pickleball will continue. On Mondays and Thursday nights from six PM to nine PM until March, as well as volleyball. The volleyball will be on Tuesday nights from six PM to nine PM as well until March. The Rec Boards meeting will be held on Thursday, the thirtieth at seven PM. We're always looking, like I said, for more volunteer. We're always looking, like I said, for more volunteers. Uh, the annual paper calendars were sent out via the mail. Um, the, the last week of December, so you should be seeing them hopefully in your, your mailboxes this week. But you can also go on the website and actually look at our newsletter for any upcoming events. I want to thank, um, Public Works and Harry, our officers and our fire department for all of their help today with, you know, making sure that the streets were kept safe, um, especially Public Works with clearing the streets with the plowing and salting. Um, I know that they came in over the weekend and also Friday preparing and being, you know, as, uh, acting chief have exceeded that, you know, obviously winter is finally here with the snow today. Um, I want us to all remember that on Thursday, the 9th of this month is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So please thank our officers. You can send them a note, possibly wear some blue to, to obviously, you know, support them, share a positive story. Um, but just remember to keep them in your thoughts and prayers and keep showing them your love. I want to wish a happy birthday to Linda Rifford and Thomas Orsini. They are both our crossing guards and we are grateful to have them with us. Um, and I think that is all that I have as of right now. That's the end of my report.
I want to back up a little bit and ask Mr. Catania a question. Do we have any, um, update on the stop order for the Chester Water issue up on their property at Harrison Hill?
Yes, they have provided us with a timeline in order to remediate the situation. Um, they had basically responded to the stop work order issued by the code enforcement officer. Uh, we had also met out there with the county conservation district, which also has some jurisdiction on the matter. And they were going to provide that same notice of, of violation to Chester Water with, with similar file that we would require. We don't have anything other than that at this point. They were hiring a, a consultant to, to prepare the necessary plans and submit them to the borough and to the county conservation district.
So there's still a chance that they're going to use the, uh, it looks like three acres of woods that they clear cut as a dumping ground? All right, I have Shepherd Street, obviously upset over it. And, um, they're, they're worried about water issues because virtually every property on Shepherd Street has at least one sump pump and I'm not an engineer. I don't know what dumping piles of dirt does to how much it worsens that matter.
They defored the area that has a certain amount of, you know, limits the amount of runoff calling out. Once they remove those trees, stormwater management would be required. And they, they are aware of that.
Okay. All right, I'll update the folks on Shepherd Street for that. I appreciate that, or on that. I appreciate that. Mr. Pappas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three motion, uh, items here. The first one is a motion to authorize, uh, the police department to sell a 2011 Dodge Ram. I believe that's a pickup truck via the auction on Minnesota bid. Uh, this is a vehicle that was seized, uh, from the driveway scams that were going on in 2023. Uh, how it became a possession of the police department. It was an asset forfeiture from the criminal case.
Who wants to second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any questions? Motion carries.
Okay, my second motion is to accept the resignation of Sergeant Ryan Eastman.
Who wants to second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
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 Mr. Willett, roll call, please.
Uh, hold on just one second so I can write it up. Okay, Mr. Heller?
Aye.
Yes, Ms. Fulvio?
No.
Mrs. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Duplikie?
Yeah.
Ms. Awicky?
No.
Mr. Pappas?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Uh, it is one, two, three, four, four, three. Yes.
Motion carries.
And my last motion is to certify the Civil Service Commission uh, in the two full-time patrol officer vacancies within the department. And to request the certification of an eligibility list from the commission.
Who wants to second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries.
That completes my, uh, task.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Burke?
Yes, uh, I do want to wish everybody a happy 2025. Hopefully it treats us better. Um, there was no ordinance committee meeting for December. Our next meeting is Thursday, January the 16th at 6:30 P. M. Um, I do have two action items. The first is a motion to adopt an ordinance authorizing the incurrence of non-electoral debt pursuant to the issuance of a general obligation note in the amount of $1 million to the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority for the purchase of seven and a half acres of property presently owned by Our Lady of Charity Parish.
Who wants that second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any questions? I want to thank you all, particularly Mr. Willett, Mr. Wills, Mr. Catania, Mr. Burke. And, uh, Mr. McCourt for their work on that. I'm sorry if I missed anyone.
And my second, the action item is a motion to advertise an ordinance amending, supplementing and updating the borough's recycling ordinance to ensure Act 101 compliance and for a recycling performance grant through the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection.
Who wants to second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion ca- or, I'm sorry, any opposed, any questions? Motion carries.
Um, the last thing I have is a question regarding, uh, personnel matter. Sergeant Eastman was placed on an administrative leave prior to his resignation, and I would think that would have to be on the agenda item. Is that correct, Mr. Wills, or am I mistaken?
Um, not necessarily. The, the borough could certainly confirm that, uh, simply do a confirming motion. But, uh, he was not suspended. He was simply placed on paid administrative leave. So there was no monetary diminution to Sergeant Eastman during this period.
Yes, but he was also issued a letter of reprimand, which is part of the reason why he has tendered his resignation with the borough.
Yeah, I, I, I am not prepared as a result of personnel and confidentiality.
Right, I understand. I understand. This is just a political witch hunt as usual. The end of my report. Thank you.
I strongly disagree that it's a.
Of course you would. Of course you would.
That, I'll let you finish, but that, as far as political witch hunts goes, I mean, th- there's, there's been a witch hunt, um, against four members of council, and I understand that you think there's a political witch hunt against three members of council. This is unfortunately, uh, let me, let me finish and then you can rebut, you can rebuttal. We can go on for as long as you want. There's no need to, uh, get into a shouting match. I believe what I believe. You believe what you believe. I have, um, professional issues with some folks and that's just the way it is. I've done nine to 10 months of fact finding. Um, let me back up and say that none of this, none of this should have happened. I'm personally ashamed that I was unaware of 99% of the things that were going on right under our nose. I am alarmed by the findings in the Clark Hill report. Um, as G-rated as it was, I mean, I've spoken to six officers that told me that their testimonies were completely gutted, absolutely gutted. I, I see why a law firm would do such a thing. They, they try to make it lawsuit proof. I'm also privy to additional information. Several other of us are, are privy to additional other information, but, um, none of this happened with the, started with the events of March the 8th. I was aware of certain things long prior to March the 8th, particularly the civil service issue, which is, uh, very serious. It's, it's more serious than the old Mopac cheating scandal of years ago. There, there was a pattern of a hostile work environment. Uh, 10 out of 13 of our officers were working in, in my opinion, and it is my opinion, I must, I must say, must be firm on, a hellscape. Um, there, there, there was a soft quota on arrests. 117 DUI in a 1.6 square mile borough. When comparatively speaking, Upland had 20, Upper Darby had 40, Marple had 18, Wade 117, and I'm in touch with law firms to tell me the majority of these are being tossed out. I mean, you're talking about civil rights violations. None of this had to happen. And, um, the buck certainly stops with me and, and the mayor. We are the top two leaders. I'm not on the police committee. I'm not the mayor, but it stops with us and I feel I should have known this, but there was a wall built around the police department. There was a policy that our police may not, or could not communicate directly with the council. And, um, for that, we were just unaware of so many things. And, um, I've publicly stated why I was hit. The FOP had reached out to me in November of 2023, and I was simply assisting an officer that there was an attempted termination on for really no valid reason. And, um, other information's come out since the Clark Hill report was delivered. There's a, there's additional DUI targeting and that's as per the testimony of current officers. Much like my situation. Um, I was stalked by Viper. An officer was stalked by Viper. I mean, why we didn't have a Viper policy, it's, it's stalking. It's still a violation of state law. It's a chargeable offense. We had, we had a borough issued phone that was deleted. We had a borough issued phone that was deleted by a non-uniform employee. We have a multimillion dollar towing class action suit coming. Where, um, by some odd act of God, all the towing records were destroyed in what was called the storm of the century, where we received one-third of inch, uh, uh, of an inch of rain that day. We have some serious troubles. If anyone thinks this will go away, I mean, we may act peacefully. We may act together. We may resolve our intergovernmental issues, but, um, the legal fallout will persist for months and years. So we don't necessarily make the decision whether this gets referred to the state attorney general. Dave Sunday may very well make that decision on his own, but none of this had to happen. The mayor may, the mayor may or not disagree with me. I made multiple attempts to reach out and make peace with, with police leadership. It, it failed. I tried, but none of it had to happen. I know what happened, but what March the 8th did was it, um, inspired the majority of our officers to come forward with some of the issues. And again, I, I, I will take full responsibility for everything that happened in this police department. I am the council president. But we have dozens and dozens and dozens of victims that had their civil rights violated, their lives at least temporarily turned upside down, some permanently turned upside down. None of it.
Mr. President, if I'm, if I'm to understand what you're saying about, uh, working together amicably, does that mean that we won't see any more outlandish social media posts that you've made against certain members of this council?
I stand by everything that I've ever said, unless you can prove me wrong. If you prove me wrong, I will, I will issue.
State Representative Lee Ann Krupfer is not my dominatrix.
I, I.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
By the way, I did not, honestly did not know the definition of that.
Well, you should have known that before you said what you said, Mr. President.
I, I, I believe you take your orders from her and I will always believe that.
I believe you take your orders from somebody else too, and the rest of the council that vote for you the way you do do as well. So there we go. We can have our disagreements, as you said, and that's all. The end of my report. Thank you very much.
But let me ask you one question calmly. Who do I take my orders from?
I have no idea. I'm not part of the GOP. I don't, really don't know. I really don't know.
I do not take my orders from anyone. We work as a unit.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, sir.
I, I do not. And again, Dan, you and I used to have a strong relationship. At least I thought we did. I'm not sure if it was ever, ever genuine. I will always, always leave the door open to sitting down one-on-one and talking with you. And I, I will publicly state it. If you can prove me wrong, I will certainly walk back my statements. I don't think that higher level politicians should have any say in our government. And I was strongly critical of the GOP when I ran and won as a Democrat because I thought they had too much interference. The last council offered to benefit while we were 6-1 Republican. We never heard a damn thing from higher level politicians. If I'm wrong, we'll sit down and talk about it and then I will issue a rebuttal and you know I will. It is what I believe. I believe it firmly. I, and I believe it from, uh, testimonies I've heard from members of the Delaware County Democrats, certain members, and we can talk about that later. But again, I'm sorry the whole thing happened. This has been a nightmare of a year for most of us. Not one minute goes by unless I'm working or sleeping that I don't think about the victims. I don't care about myself. I'm fine. Big deal. It happened. It happened. Um, there, there are victims. Now, Dan, you can, it's okay. You, you can call it a crock of shit. I have a conscience.
Didn't say that. I did not say that.
Well, I, I thought you said, I thought I heard.
I said, get off the cross is what I said.
I, I'm not on the cross. I said, I don't consider myself a victim. I said, there are victims that we.
All right, we're wasting valuable time, Mr. President. Can we please move on?
Okay, well, let's move on. Mr. Duplikie?
Okay, my turn. Uh, no action items today. So I just have some updates of what's happened over the last month and certain things that will be occurring, uh, coming in the next few weeks. Regarding trash and recycling, I want to thank all the residents for, uh, cooperating and, uh, being patient with the holiday revised trash and recycle pickup. I think it went pretty smoothly and everybody cooperated. Like I said, so thank you. Uh, just another reminder, Martin Luther King Day is Monday, the 20th. And we have the no recycle pickup that following Wednesday. So only trash Wednesday, January 22nd. Uh, Public Works, uh, were still having issues with full-time staff. Uh, three full-timers are out, you know, kind of out with health concerns. Uh, Dave Evans is currently working in its supervisory role, but he is still, uh, dealing with the issue he has. So I, uh, you know, one, he could probably return soon. So right now we're only running with really one full-time, working full-time. So we need to hire one to two more full-time, as I mentioned at prior meetings. I actually have an interview scheduled for a candidate this Wednesday. And I also have an application for another applicant that has the qualities we're looking for, qualifications we're looking for. And I plan to have myself and Mr. Evans reach out to this person for a potential interview. Uh, I want to thank Public Works, particularly, uh, kind of full-timer Bud Brzezinski for maintaining our borough streets in today's storm. It certainly wasn't as much as we were being forecasted to get, but uh, they got out there and did a fine job with our streets and kept them safe and clean. Uh, we have another forecasted more significant storm coming this weekend, apparently. So, uh, you know, just be prepared. All the residents be prepared for this particular storm and always remember that, uh, it, you know, get the snow off the sidewalks, you know, with for the 24 hours after the snow has ceased. Uh, I also had a pleasure of running into an American Red Cross, the local executive director in our territory. She covers Delaware County, Montgomery County and Chester County. And she would like to address council. She heard, I saw her at her, uh, holiday party. And she would like to, uh, address our council and, uh, you know, Mr. Havick can be there and Mr. Montella be there, uh, how they can coordinate, work with Red Cross to, uh, you know, work together with Red Cross with our emergency responder department. Uh, I have her business card here. Uh, like I said, her name's Lynn Cohen. She's the Delaware Valley Chapter Executive Director. With a mission statement, the American Red Cross prevents and alleviates human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power. With a mission statement, the American Red Cross prevents and alleviates human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and generosity of donors. So I will invite her to our February meeting to speak so she can introduce herself and see what everybody thinks.
That's good.
Okay. Lastly, uh, I'm addressing um Councilwoman Folvio. Uh, I, I don't want to mention the guy's name, but uh, the, our gentleman showed interest at Wells Fargo. I took it upon myself to go, I bank at Wells Fargo. I went in and introduced myself. So when you send out the uh notice of our meeting next week, please include him and uh, cause he asked for a special invite, make sure. But he plans on being there. Okay, Ms. Folvio? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. And that's my report. Thank you.
Mr. Leslie, sir. Mr. Dykes, when I locate you, I will attempt to unmute you. Go ahead, Mr. Leslie.
Carrie, he's muted.
Give me a moment. I don't want to close out the meeting by accident. All right. You should have the option to unmute, Mr. Leslie.
There you go. Thank you. Good evening, council.
Mr. Dykes as well. Click on that, please.
Everybody. Not much to report, uh, just one thing. Uh, thirty-five oh eight Edgemont Avenue, that store is closing. That's the dollar magic and uh, everybody have a happy new year of twenty twenty-five and everyone have a safe and healthy new year. Fire safe that it is. Thank you.
Mr. Dykes.
Hi there, everyone. Uh, just a couple of quick things on the rec board, just so everyone knows, closing out uh twenty twenty-four. The senior luncheon had over a hundred and eighty uh residents attend. They had entertainment as well as Santa Claus come. And then the tree lighting service was a big thank you out to the fire company for bringing Santa and Coburn Chorus for coming and singing us and singing in. Uh, Sherry said we had the uh fifth and sixth grade dance on uh Friday night, the third. Uh, there were a hundred and thirty-nine students for there. And this coming Sunday is the Artful Aging Program. At one o'clock, please register with the office. February is coming up as well for the Artful Aging. However, I do not have the date on that yet. Uh, other upcoming things, we are working on the Easter egg hunt. So if you're interested in working with that, working with that and helping out with stuffing eggs and working the Easter egg hunt, we're working on that. We're also working on summer concerts. We've increased the number of concerts this year to three, so we're doing a May, a June and a July. Um, just a couple of other quick things because of financial um fundraising that we were able to do this year with, with uh events and things like that. We were able to purchase a number of items for the rec board uh to help throughout the year to save money in the long run. Um, one of those was uh, we purchased tents that to be, we use for family day. That normally costs us around seven to eight hundred dollars a year to uh, to rent them for the, for the, for a day. Uh, we've purchased two of them, so it'll be the same size we have now and they can be used in two different events. Uh, so we can use it for family day and then the other events around the borough we need tents for, and we'll save money that way. Uh, we also bought some stand-up tables for events for event use. Um, we pick it, purchase pickleball and tennis equipment for the new field, the new court at uh Sampson at the multi-purpose court. We purchase, we were able to purchase safety poles for events. We use them at the senior luncheon and we use them for the dance this week. Um, so they're going to help us with that. Um, what else did we have here? And we purchased art, uh crafts for Artful Aging for about four or five months. So that's already prepaid. And also we, along with the uh grant from PICO for the sanctuary and the, and the Arlington Park, uh, we purchased a gazebo to go over to the Arlington uh Avenue Park. So those will be coming in soon. Um, so we're all looking for, we're looking for lots of fun things coming up this coming year. Anyone who wishes to help out, as Sherry said, the uh January thirtieth at seven o'clock will be the uh, Rick Board meeting. Family Day meeting, the first Family Day meeting will be on uh Thursday, on Thursday, March the twenty-seventh at six o'clock. And followed by the record meeting. And I think that's pretty much it for what I have. Thank you.
I appreciate you. That opens the last public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, use the reaction to raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. One more time, use the reaction to raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. Chris, did you want to talk again? All right, Chris, unmute yourself. I gave you the option.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing Santa around. It was cookie baking day at my condo and my four-year-old grandson was tickled pink. He ran across our, our courtyard chasing Santa all the way. And he came back with a candy cane for his little brother and all, and he told us all about Santa and the elves. So thank you to all the fire department who really made this little boy's day.
Are y'all done?
That's it.
Mr. and Mrs. Kelso, you have the option to unmute.
Yes, Mr. Heller, I want to know if uh you, your wife, your children, or any other members of your family are still currently on the Borough Healthcare Insurance.
Nope. As per our rules, we are on it for eleven months. The remainder of the time I paid the full price. You should have got that.
We're sticking with that? Eleven months?
Yeah, you should have got, you should have got my payments into the program. If not, actually, I'll sell, I'll send you to your house, much as you sent me a Christmas card, which was lovely. All my, all my.
I want to help you out.
Uh, uh, uh.
Feeling a Christmas spirit.
Uh, all my payments into the program I will send to you within two weeks. How about that?
That's great. I have to let you know that you and Pappas should be ashamed of what you're doing. You know.
I'm sorry.
Why, Mr.?
Why should I be ashamed of myself?
Be ashamed of what you're doing. You can continue this witch hunt.
Can you elaborate, sir? Mr. Kelso, can you elaborate since you brought my name into it? Why, why should I be ashamed?
Of what you're doing, Sergeant Eastman.
Okay. Did you read the report? Do you know some of the facts beyond the report?
You should be ashamed of yourself.
I'm not ashamed of myself. I spent thirty.
Standing up for your police officers, but every time it's a four-three vote, we know it's a stacked council. We can't wait to vote you all out.
I spent thirty-three years.
Have a good night.
We've never had any of these problems. See, there you go. You don't want to hear the facts. Okay, Mr. Kelso. Thank you.
Because your facts are nonsense. I hope you look good and orange.
You're, you're telling me that.
Funny guy, Mr. Kelso.
Hold on, Mr. Kelso, it, then we'll have a calm discussion. Before we depart, you, you believe that Mr. Pappas could potentially be charged with something and jailed?
Oh, well.
Do you, Mr. Kel, Mr. Kelso, Mr. Kelso, do you realize someone that was at least inspired by your group is about to be charged for stalking a council member? Do you realize that, that there was shotgun shells placed on the property of Mr. Pappas and my property? Do you realize we've been stalked and followed? Do you realize I was followed by three weeks by an individual that receives borough medical benefits? And I, and I blew that off? Do you realize you have no idea what we know beyond the G-rated Clark Hill report? Mr. Kelso, I invite you, I don't know if you can still hear me, I invite you and I sent you a Facebook message. I would gladly have a conversation with you. We can go out and have a coffee. You, uh, hold on, I'm going to give you a chance to unmute yourself because you can unmute yourself. I'm going to give you an opportunity to rebuttal. You have that right. I, I didn't, Mr. Kelso.
Blocked me because I did not accept your friend request.
I, well, I did the friend request so you could see the messaging. I will unblock. You, you know what? My phone number is, I'll put my phone number publicly online again. You can call me. I'm off Wednesday and Thursday and we will have a long conversation. I've made this offer to you.
I don't trust a damn thing you say.
You don't have to.
Everything in writing.
You, you, I'll put everything in writing. You, 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 you accuse me and.
I really, you know, I really have nothing to hear from you unless it's high resort.
Carol, Carol, I'll let you speak too.
What's your resignation?
Mr. Mr. Kelso, you're not going to get my resignation. We're not going to get, first of, first of, first of all, I, I haven't made.
All right, we're done.
No, we're not. I, I would like to finish the conversation.
Done when I say I'm done, Sherry.
You don't say me that way.
All right, all right.
You're done when I say I'm done.
This is, uh.
Okay, we're done.
Yeah.
All right.
I, I'm tired of listening to also.
Uh, uh, wait a minute, wait a minute. We are.
We are done.
Look.
There is nothing being productive from this conversation right now.
Listen, I'm chairing, I'm chairing the meeting. I, I know Mr. Kelso is kind of losing his cool. I've lost my cool in the past. Jim, do you want to continue the conversation or you want to cut it off at that? I'll leave you that option open to you. All right. Spend the last, spend the rest of the night. Go get some of that green stuff and uh relax. Okay. In other words, it, in, in other words, have a uh lovely rest of the night. That closes the second public discussion session.
Sharon Williams has a hand up.
Oh, I apologize. Hold on, let me reopen my view. I can't see everyone. They changed the entire format. Miss Ms. Williams, you will be given the opportunity to unmute yourself. Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Hi, I just wanted to address the Our Lady of Charity. I, um, I used to work there. I was.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been a parishioner there for thirty-three years. Um, just to put it on your radar, the, there are two memorials in the convent parking lot.
I'm sorry, say, I cut out for a second. Can you say again about the parking lot?
Yeah. So not, I'm not the parking lot. I'm sorry. In the convent um garden area.
Oh, yeah, they're beautiful. How is there? Yep, they, they gave you a tour.
Memorials in there. One is in a tree that it's really hard to see because since they haven't been using the convent, the tree that grew over the memorial book plaques, that needs to be taken care of. Also, and I'm not sure if everybody's aware that the Army Corps of Engineers um redid that entire field less about maybe twenty years ago, maybe a little.
I recently found that out, which, which gives me hope. I think Mr. Catania would agree as far as stormwater management.
Yeah, the stormwater management should be fine. And there is also the football field was completely redone and there's a baseball diamond back there as well.
A, as a resident that's nearby there, are you, uh, you're happy with the, with the purchase?
I don't have much opinion on that. Um, I don't know that I'm happy with it. I don't know that I'm sad with it. I really would let, would have liked to have known a little bit more about it before it went through, but that is on me because I didn't do enough, my due diligence of looking into it. Um, I'm concerned about the tax situation that may come from it. We are going to have to pay for all this somehow. As a resident who lives in the borough, I'm concerned about a lot of the stuff that I'm hearing that goes along with the tax situation. Threatening lawsuits and things like that. Those are my concerns, not necessarily who owns the property because the property is going to have to be maintained. Anyway, you look at it, I just wanted to say that um, having been a parishioner there for years, I know both of those memorials. One is for a nine-year-old little girl. And one is for a former teacher who devoted her entire career to the children of McCabe and Barrow. I would like to see them remain. I would also, if we are going to go through with the purchase that's over there, to maintain the ball fields the way they are. And again, there's, there is records on file either at the rectory in the school that you can get ahold of about the stormwater and the drainage and all of that. It should all be fine to use those fields.
That was recently detailed to me. And if you noticed, there's never standing water there. So they did a wonderful job as you would expect from the Army Corps of Engineers. But you know, I, I think the consensus among council and the public is that um, uh, if you ever have a chance at night, drive up uh Dutton Mill and I, I apologize if I, I forget the name of the Sweeney. Sweeney was the previous company. I forget the name of the current company, that truck yard that's on the Middletown side, kind of across from De Mayo. Uh, you, you would, you would have been looking at something sort of development like that. I, I mean, I get many complaints, not many. There's only five or six houses there that uh, from the stadium lights and uh.
Riggs Distler.
Riggs Distler, thank you. And they, they had to uh add that because these days truck yards and businesses are getting broken into more and more by scrappers. And I think that's what you would have had down there. You would have had ninety uh landscaping vehicles dispatched at six thirty in the morning, particularly during the the peak landscaping season. And uh, overall, it is cheap and we, we feel that we've taken care of the tax situation now. Um, down the road, it could be this council, it could be ten councils from now. The building likely will have to come down because I don't think the borough would have ever be able to afford four or five million dollars to renovate it. But it would be about a half a million dollars to renovate it. So um, I don't speak for the entire council, but I, I believe leaving the building and foregoing that cost as long as possible until grants are available, even donations, whatever. You never know what can happen. But um, it won't be all too expen, all that expensive to generally improve that green space, add a gazebo, add, add some uh perimeter gardens along the woods. And I'm just, again, speaking for myself. So we.
The, the maintain, maintenance on, on the prop, on the, on the green space in the back is not a concern. I'm concerned because again, I worked in the building before it closed. I know what needs to be done. I know what was, I've been in and out of the convent. I, I have, and I think our borough residents should be voicing this opinion that you know, we, we've had manageable taxes increases, if you want to call them that, but this to me is scary that we're taking this over, two buildings need a lot of renovations in order to be occupied or they're going to need to be torn down. Who is assuming that? And we've got some money in the bank that we can use for grants or whatever that I've been made aware of.
Yep.
Property, but not all of it. So where's the rest of that money coming from? And when we look at that whole picture, it, there, the only way to pay for it is going to be by tax revenue if we don't have grants. But that is not what I raised my hand for. That is my only concern. You asked, was I for or against? I, I wasn't either way to be like, oh, I'm adamantly against it.
No, I understand.
Only for it. My concerns lie. One of the reasons why I said maybe we should try to sell it would because it would, if we sold it, it would have been for tax revenue. And we, we would have been able to charge whoever purchased the property taxes and where is the tax money coming from now that the borough is going to earn it? It's going to come out of the homeowner's pockets. That was all, those are my opinions. That's all I wanted to say. I'm more worried about the maintenance at this point. And the only thing I had to wanted to convey to you was that there are two memorials over in that um convent courtyard that need to be maintained.
Let me, let me back up real quick. Um, well, as far as the memorials go, we, we would certainly preserve them and there's, there's no plan to do anything with, with the, the garden that's on the back of the of the, of the convent. But I, I, I do, uh, I certainly understand your concerns. And uh, there, there are openings on the committee if you would want to join. So we could reach out to you for that too. Those, those meetings will start after settlement. So.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I mean, I, I should say resume after settlement. So.
Right, thank you.
Are there any more hands up? Going once, going twice. The second public discussion is closed. Council officials, anything else? With that all, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Happy new year, everyone. And good night.